Mine's it six is six.
Yeah, I'm with you. I got, this is what I got. Oh, my wife sent me a text, so. This is. Yeah, you got one of those too. I haven't read it either, I thought you, I was hoping you did. This is, this is. Right.
You're good.
According to the clock, Gary, do we got it? Gary, is it on? Okay, according to the clock, it's six P M. Time to start our meeting. Please all join in the pledge with me. Stand and remove your hat. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody, for coming. Please put your cell phones on silence or off. Patty, you want to do roll call?
John?
Here.
Dan?
Here.
Wanda?
Here.
Ryan?
Here.
Don?
Here.
You have the agenda in front of you, had a copy of it, is there any changes that need to be made? Hearing none, I entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Wanda, second by Dan, to approve the agenda. All in favor say aye.
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 Oppose the same, motion carries. Does anyone have a non-financial interest? If so, you must state the reason for abstaining.
I do not.
I do not.
I do not.
I do not.
And I do not. Okay, public comment is a time for persons to address this body on any subject, no matter, and no action may be taken on a matter raised under this item of the agenda until the matter itself has been specifically included on an agenda as an item upon which action will be taken. Each person has up to three minutes to speak. There shall be no personal attacks against the members of this body, county staff, individual or organizations. Chair has the authority to enforce this policy. Failure to adhere to these rules may result in forfeiture of the remaining speaking time. It's called my attention that we have one person that wants to publicly speak. Robert Barnes?
Mr. Chairman, I would assume that Robert wants to speak about solar, is that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so I would move that we move him down to let him speak at the time of the, when we're going to discuss our solar.
Yeah. That'll be a public hearing, so that'll be an opportunity to, you want to speak on solar, correct? That'd probably be the purpose. Are you okay with that? Okay.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is county liability insurance. Roger.
Thank you very much. Pardon? Okay. Thanks for having me, take a few minutes of time. I see on the agenda is five minutes, I'm to take about two or three minutes. Then I've got some information to pass on to you about the liability insurance, property insurance for the county. First of all, in your packet, I'll do, be real quick about this. You should have a workers' compensation form, statistical form. And what I've done is highlight the three years for which they're charged in premium. And those three years are the years that they have experience modifier. So they use the years twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. Over the right-hand column, you can see the claim activity that has occurred during those times. Because of that claim activity, your experience factor has blown up a little bit. And the increase in premium is about twenty-two, twenty-four percent from where it was last year, based on three of the last four years. Now, next year, if everything stays like it is, one bad year will go out and one good year will come in in the three-year period. But right now, the experience factor is one point one seven. Last year was one point oh two, so went up fifteen percent on points. And the premium went up about, like I said, twenty, twenty-two, twenty-four percent. And that's statutory coverage you have to have. This is the, this is the, probably the only, the best and the only work comp carrier that's available for municipalities. And they do a great job with the claims. So if there's any questions on that.
Could you provide us a list of those people that had claims?
Do I, do I have names?
Can you?
I can.
I'd like to see that.
Okay. I get that, I'll get it to Patty and she can get it to you.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you, Roger.
Yep. I'll do it tomorrow, have a list of them. And then secondly, there are going to be some discussion, I think, about the fire pack coverage that takes care of the ambulance and the emergency management operations. And you've got in your, in your packet, I think, Paul, in your packet, this kind of information that explains to you in layman's language, exactly what their policy does versus what other policies do for ambulance and emergency management type exposures. And I won't go into that, I just mentioned that it's a good program, it's an excellent program, it's the only program that, that fits what these guys do, these guys and gals do. And gives them coverage they need, no more than what they need and no less than what they need. It has done very well all the years that are existence. Those are the two policies that I'm going to talk about. And if anybody has any questions, I'd answer them.
I would want, in case you try to cut stuff out, you can have more than five minutes.
Excuse me?
You can have more time than five minutes.
Okay. Well, I've got some guys here that, that I want, want to meet, have you meet. Over the last year, Employers Mutual Insurance Company has gone through a agency review, I'm going to call it, and some agencies made it through the review, I don't know what their criteria were, but we lost our contract to EMC Insurance Company. So, for, for the school system, for the county and so forth, we had to find somebody else to take care of, Yankton County. I'm going to be here for a while, but I've got a couple of gentlemen that I want to introduce to you. They write a lot of municipality business down in Nebraska, right across the river in Norfolk. Rick Keener and P J Gall, R J Gall are in the audience, and I'll have them, and with, with my help, if I, if they need it, have you guys listen to their proposal on the property liability vehicles and equipment coverage that you have had in past years. And they're a lot smarter than I am, they do a lot more of this than I do, so I'll have them come up and give you their, their work. They're a very excellent agency down in Norfolk, just sixty miles away. Will service it still, will give you, still give us, give you our services along with their services, and so that'll be a big plus for the county. Their price is the same as my price would be if, in fact, we were able to do that, but we weren't able to do that. So that's the name of the business in the insurance world right now. Rick Keener and R J Gall, and I'll sit down behind them and have you guys do your thing.
Thank you, Roger, appreciate everybody being here and having us, and I was believed everything Roger said until he said we were smarter than him, so. Out of respect for time, and I know you guys all have a lot to cover, I'm going to just go ahead in the green packet and fast forward on, in the PowerPoint printout there to page four, which kind of jumps right into the meat and potatoes of everything.
This one?
Yep. Page four there, where we'll just jump straight to. So the first slide at the top of the page there is, is basically your twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five premium summary overview as it, as it breaks it down by line item. When we go and review these types of policies, we take into consideration a lot of different things, but it really boils down to really three important factors. The, the premium difference for year over year, the coverage difference year over year, and then if there's any changes in terms and conditions, so on and so forth. Getting right to the, right to the, cutting right to the chase there. Year over year, we're looking at a seven point seven nine premium difference. Strictly from premium standpoint. Going down, just fast forwarding one slide. Our total insured value, which will be broken down on the page following here, I put everything in a spreadsheet as far as our total insured value, we're increasing about, roughly about four million dollars in insured value. That's largely where that premium difference comes from. So we're going basically from forty-one point six million to forty-five point three million in total insured value for all the property that we've insured. The last thing, as far as the terms and conditions goes, would be in the form of the deductible as far as the, mainly in the form of the wind and hail. If you look on the following page, under the schedule of the statement of values, the three buildings, the three highest valued buildings that we insure will change at renewal to a one percent deductible when it goes to winter hail. All, the other terms and conditions stay the same, with the five thousand being the all other peril deductible, and the twenty-five thousand on the wind hail for the other buildings.
Why did those buildings change?
Currently, the, the market right now, with inflation, with the cost of building construction, the cost of claims, when you're getting into buildings, you know, how many is that, you know, five to seven million range or higher, you're seeing a minimum seventy-five thousand, or on the larger ones, the one percent is, is what many carriers are implementing.
Okay, so for the government center, that one percent deductible for that would be, what, like seven thousand?
That's correct.
About a seven thousand?
Seventy-seven. Forty-three. Now, the workaround, if you will, to that, which time hasn't quite allowed at this point in time, but we have some, waiting on some information, that we can do what's called a deductible buy-down option, which would be a completely separate policy. For example, you know, if you want to take, you know, the larger of the three, and you'd be looking at two hundred and sixty-four thousand, you could take a separate policy out and buy that down to, say, seventy-five thousand, fifty thousand, hundred thousand, somewhere's in there.
Does that?
I don't have pricing on that for you at this time, but.
So that one percent, that's just wind inhaling?
Correct. You still, the, the only three thing, the only thing that changed was the, was the one percent on those three buildings, everything else basically stayed the, the same dollar amount wise. Five thousand on all other peril for any book. Any other questions on that? I'll fast, I'll flip to the next page, five. General liability. We got the base general liability of one million per occurrence, two million aggregate. We'll get down, a few slides down, we'll talk about the umbrella, which, which is over and above your, your base general liability limits. Your rating factors. General liability can be rated in many ways, in this particular municipalities, it's rated based off of operating expenditures as the large portion of where your premiums drive up there. On the business auto, again, we have the, the liability of a million dollars, not counting the umbrella, med pay of a five thousand per person, uninsured, uninsured, a million dollars. And then I did attach a schedule, which has all of the vehicles that we do have listed on the auto. For the most part, everything has a, has, that has full coverage, is on a two thousand dollar deductible. There might be an exception of a trailer or something in there, that might be something a little less, but. The garagekeeper's coverage line, you'll see a sixty thousand dollar coverage limit there, that would be for any vehicle not owned by the county that's in your care, custody and control, if there was a loss of any kind. Again, out of the sake of time, I put the list of vehicles in there, but we don't have to thumb through line by line. Any questions?
When do we have to make a decision?
Renewal is when?
The renewal is one one.
I get it, when do we have to make the renewal decision?
I guess, from a time standpoint on our behalf, we would probably have to have a bind order into EMC by, I'm thinking Tuesday, the twenty-sixth, maybe Wednesday, the twenty-seventh?
We have a year-end meeting on the twenty-eighth.
Is there a reason that we're just getting this information now, not a month ago?
Well.
I got the same question.
So, we, we pry and pry the best that we're able to, and we just got this renew, we just got this renewal released to us middle of last week, so we tried to get it out as soon as we possibly.
We have a year-end meeting on the twenty-eighth, would that work for your answer?
I'm not a big fan of making a decision with the guns in my head.
We, we just went through the same thing with our health insurance policy, with a two and, two and a half, three-week notice, and it wasn't very pleasurable. So this, this is going to be a tough decision for us to make, sitting here, and like Dan mentions, we got another meeting on December twenty-eighth, and you expect us to make a decision on, on this within a week? That's.
I'm not saying it's not possible, I'm just trying to.
I understand, I understand, and I want to do whatever we can do from our side to accommodate you.
Can there be a, a two-month extension of existing policy?
I do not believe a two-month extension is something that's very likely to happen.
January one, we're no longer insured unless we do it before then?
That's correct.
Here's any discussion then.
I would suggest that in the future, we discuss this in November, not the second meeting in December.
If we could make the decision on the twenty-eighth, I think that would be good, and, you know, are you guys willing to work with us?
Yeah.
Because that, we, we just all, we just all got this, and it's, it's going up significantly, and we have to do our due diligence to the taxpayers to make sure we're tax. Yes, we have a year-end meeting, Roger.
At one.
At one, so if you guys are okay with that, are you, you guys okay with that too? It gives us more time to.
To digest.
Sounds to me like we don't have much choice, but.
And that's why I tried to put as much in here as I can, and I know in respect of time, like I said, there, there's more information in here that we're probably.
I understand that, but let's, let's look at, like, like, like Wanda said, next year, let's get this information to us the end of November, no later than the end, end of November, so that we can make a, a decision based upon what we need to do to serve the, our constituents the best that we can.
Yep.
This, this is like we're, we're under the gun and we don't have a choice.
Yeah, and I agree with you a hundred percent, and if I would have the information, I, any sooner, I would have had it out to Roger and to everybody as sooner than.
Question for you on this two thousand dollar deductible, I mean, we have, I'm looking here, a nineteen ninety-three Ford dump truck, you know, it's probably not worth, it's worth more than two thousand, but not a whole lot, is there a way to raise that two thousand dollar deductible?
Well, I think the more appropriate question would be if, if you're concerned with that would be, is it something that's worthy of even carrying full coverage on?
Well, e- exactly.
If you raise the deductible, you're just lowering what you.
Like a nineteen seventy homemade boat trailer, I, I kind of wonder why we're having that full coverage. Ninety-three, some of this stuff, yes, some of this.
Okay, so, so, just to clarify on the spreadsheet, there, it only, them, 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 the nineteen seventy homemade boat covered, that's just a liability only. If there's no deductible listed there, that's just a liability only item.
Okay.
Just to clarify, sorry about that.
All right, that makes sense, then.
There are, just to clarify here, the next slide up is on the inland marine, so there are several, a few items that you will see listed on both, the inland marine, which is mainly like your, the motor grader, so on and so forth. The physical damage will come from the inland marine, the liability will come from the auto side. That's structurally how they're set up in the, for the insurance.
Back, back to the deductible question, is there an option for a higher deductible for some of that, even see, one, we have a thousand dollar deduct, everything's a two thousand, and then one's a thousand dollar.
I think that might, might have been a. I think that might, might have been a.
Unfortunately, when, when we have an incident, we really have an incident and.
You're not going to turn in $2,500.
No, no, they're usually more than that and, you know, if we can still have good coverage and, you know, pay a little bit less, I think that's kind of the goal.
Yeah, I know that you guys are, you know, time sensitive here and you just got this information. And again, I can reassure you that we weren't sitting on it. We were trying to get it to you guys as soon as we possibly could. My conversation is moving on the linebacker. I'm not going to cover a ton of stuff on this, but the one thing that you do need to look at, the linebacker is the reason that you're with EMC. EMC, that's an exclusive product for them. The linebacker is also where I really, really want to stress, it does have a retro date of 1-1 of 1993. Now, why is that important right now? Because I can tell you there is roughly around six to seven claims, maybe even eight here recently, that are still out there, that are kind of going back on there. So it is a coverage, it's a tail coverage, if you want to call it that, that is really protecting and being there for your guys' sake. That is also on the law enforcement liability. So on the linebacker, okay, just some examples.
Outstanding claims were claims that were incurred while we had coverage with you, why would we not have coverage with you even if we went somewhere else?
Well, at that point in time, there is a difference between a per occurrence and a claims made policy. So one is on a claims made, so that is going all the way back to them, or on when did it occur? So as an example, the law enforcement is on a per occurrence basis, which means if something did occur while that policy is in place, you have coverage. The claims made is different. This claim was made back in.
And what would the statute of limitations on that be?
I do not know that. I do not. Okay, there, Roger, they're thinking maybe seven years to five years or? Okay.
So. Different claims have different statute of limitations.
Sure.
And so there's seven claims you're saying that are outstanding?
That are still out there, that there is a reserve, that they are still reserving dollars for, that are open. They are not closed.
We don't know how old those claims are.
I do not, at this point, I do not and that's. Roger.
Roger, on the 28th, can you provide us with that information on those seven claims?
Prior to that date.
Prior to that date, I think like Wanda said.
Yeah, prior to the date that we're talking about.
Tomorrow would be nice.
Okay. So I guess I, on those, is there any other questions on there? Obviously, those, I want you to understand on the packet that you guys do have, where you're looking at the, these are examples, not limits, that you're looking on the linebacker. Where you see the 295 contract dispute, those are examples, those aren't limits, so. The cyber solution, obviously, that is another key piece that is seeing more and more claims being made on. So we've included your cyber policy in there, if you look. Unfortunately, we've seen a huge uptick in cyber claims and it, I don't see it slowing down. So obviously, you want to make sure that you have coverage. Right now, you're looking at it as 100,000, do we have the ability to go higher than that? We do, we do, but obviously, it's dollars. So I'm just, this is something that has been put in. The crime infidelity, as you go through, this is really for employee dishonesty, forgery, theft, burglary, you can kind of go down the list. We also do have a $5 million umbrella that does go over pretty much everything that we talked about before. It does go over the auto, it does go over the liability, it does go over the crime, it does, or excuse me, the linebacker. So that's an additional coverage that we do have on top of that. Then just circling around, obviously, we put at the end, again, the premium summary. Is there any other questions? If not, I want to thank you guys for your time and I do want to understand that this is, we are working with Smith Insurance on this. So that's why we're kind of relying on Roger on some of that and we're kind of pulling the pieces together, you know, the pieces of the puzzle together, so we're all on the same page. So, thank you.
If the 28th is the magic day, I mean, I'll be here and, or not. Is that your last meeting, 28th?
Yes.
Okay, well, that's no problem, we get it done, it'll be, it'll be rushed. Although, these guys are exactly right, the insurance companies aren't as swift as they have been in the years past. And they kind of drag their feet until they have to put something together. And we started this process back in October and here it is, December. And we didn't get, they didn't get it till a week ago, so.
And Roger, I understand that insurance companies are insurance companies and, and the thing is, is we pay the, we pay the premium.
Yeah, you do.
And they need to understand that, that there are more insurance companies out there.
Yeah.
And if they're not going to get us the information when we need it, so that we can make a logical decision to protect the taxpayers of Yankton County.
Yeah. I get it.
And I know you understand that.
I talk to them, I talk to them not every day, but almost every day about those kinds of services. And we give you the best service we can, but we're dependent on what they do to us.
I understand.
It's not the same as it used to be.
Got you.
Like nothing else.
Thanks for everything you do.
So we'll come back to 28th, is that fair?
I'll get you, I'll send you the time.
And then if we could get what we wanted, the outstanding crimes.
The outstanding claims.
I'll get claims and I'll get.
Reports, the accident reports. Right.
Claims and what else are we going to get?
The number of accidents that we had.
Oh, the claims, yeah, the claims and then also you want the work comp claims done or just all claims?
Work comp, all claims.
All claims, including work comp? Okay. And then the claims that are open, are the linebacker.
Rob, I got a question for you for a second, do you know the statute of limitation that the county has for various claims? Depends on, okay. So could you, is there a limit, is there, you know, 10 year, is there a maximum time or? Three to six year timeframe, okay.
What is it, Rob? Well, you know, that claim that came up down in Nebraska, we talk about all the time.
Robbie, is your mic on?
Three to six.
Maybe that's why I couldn't hear.
Wanda, you're not here, nobody has their microphones on.
Do you know, Roger, those old claims like that, six, seven years old? If we had happened to go with someone else, would, do you think that would affect the county?
No, that's been, that's been, that's been reported and they'll have to handle it, whether they have the insurance or not. I mean, it's been reported and they've got them, it's just they're in some way and shape and form in the process of some attorneys fighting it out, I'm sure. But I've got six or seven, I had one just reported, new claim a couple of days ago. So there's one new one.
Yeah, I got that notice too.
Yeah. So, but I'll get those claims, Patty and I see you the 28th.
See you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Roger. Next item, South Dakota Public Insurance Alliance, Lynn.
All right. Hey, this is the fourth year in a row I've been here with you guys. I've seen you in other places before, but. So before I get started, first of all, I'm Lynn Brenn, I'm the executive director now of the South Dakota Public Insurance Alliance. I took on this role in April, so I'm super excited to be here, very happy to be able to offer a quote for coverage. A little bit about my background for a couple of you that haven't been here to hear this little spiel in the past. I worked claims for almost 24 years before coming over to the administrative side of the pool. Almost 17 years of that was handling claims that the Riskpool administers. So lots of experience, lots of history with Riskpool, with public entity in South Dakota. So before we even talk about the SDPA though, there's two things in your folder that I want you to take a look at. Whether you join the SDPA or not, you have access, your first responders have access to the connections program. This is an employee program for first responders, it is a counseling program. Right now, your first responders have access through that, or to that through your participation with the South Dakota Workers Compensation Fund. I would ask that you take these brochures, whether you recycle, burn, whatever you do with the rest of this packet, put these in places where those first responders can see them. Best place is in the cars that they're driving or in the bathroom stalls because unfortunately, South Dakota just has this weird stigma about mental health. And even though we're happy to go to the gym, happy to go to the doctor's office, we get really embarrassed and really worried about what people think if we're going into the therapist's office. This is totally confidential, three sessions are free. The South Dakota Public Insurance Alliance last year began financially partnering with the Work Comp Fund to help support this, to get this out. So put these where people can find them, because this is a very great benefit that the Work Comp Fund was critical in starting and we're just happy to partner with it. So that's my, my high level spiel about connections. So now we'll talk about what's in your folder. We've got some brochures that I've included in the folder, you guys have heard about this, I'm sure in the past. One brochure talks about overview of the pool. We've been here since 1987. We were formed in response to a hardening insurance market. Commercial insurance in the late 80s was unwilling or unable to provide coverage that was sufficient for public entities, so that's why we're here. We have been here since 1987, our goal is financially stable options for public entities only in South Dakota. Okay, so you're partnering with people, with other communities that are like minded as far as risk and philosophies on claims administration and handling. The employment practices and government practices hotline brochures are in there. Those hotlines are resources that we give to our participating members. You can utilize those hotlines, we encourage you to involve your local council, but they will answer questions specifically, the most highly used is our employment practices hotline. Because while our local council sometimes is fantastic at all things, they cannot just be experts at everything. So we give them the employment practices hotline as an opportunity, maybe to get some guidance, bounce some stuff off. Any employment related situations, hiring, firing, disciplinary action, all of those things get addressed by the hotline. Government practices is kind of everything else. We really used it when we had COVID and then the legislature threw some marijuana at us. Lots of good questions come from those two topics, so we were able to use the hotline to get some advice for those options. The next thing in your packet is a two page little flyer about member benefits, talks about things like our loss control surveys, loss control training, things like that. So loss control surveys, we have safety benefits, we partner with them, they come around once every three years, they provide some loss control recommendations. And then that helps you qualify for some credits on, on your premium costs or your contribution costs. Along with that, you already have access to some online training through participation in the Work Comp Fund, we share in those costs. Joining the pool would give your law enforcement folks some additional access to exclusive law enforcement training. You can have access to LLRMI on your own, the base price for that is about 25 grand. And what that does is it creates policies and procedures that are developed specifically for South Dakota law enforcement agencies and then also training to support those policies. They are continually updated and then they are also afforded some training opportunities, live training as well for our law enforcement folks. You can also get other live trainings as requested through safety benefits, they've done a lot of commissioner training as far as different topics that you might have. There's also MSHA training that's included for members. We do have, you have access to project boundary fence through Dakota State University regardless of your participation in the pool. That's going to give you some penetration testing as far as what your cyber vulnerabilities are. The folks from EMC talked about the fact that those types of claims are rising, they're not wrong. But the way to avoid those claims, yes, we do want to get some coverage for that and we've got some coverage built in as well, but training, right? We need to educate people and so that we understand, because honestly, the human element is kind of the critical part of a lot of these cyber breaches. It's getting through our employees heads and even my own folks, don't click the link. The prince of Uruguay is not sending you money, he's not your long lost relative. Grandma is not calling you from jail, she doesn't want your money. Those are the kinds of things that we are trying to get through to our employees. So by offering additional training, then hopefully we can avoid some of those claims. So you'll, you'll kind of hear as I talk, our philosophy is to be very proactive, right? We want you to have resources and tools to help you avoid risks and mitigate those exposures if you have them. As opposed to just coming in in the backend and saying, okay, well now we have this to deal with and we'll figure it out. So we'll go on property evaluation, so we have quoted your property coverage. But if you do decide to join the pool, we would have safety benefits come out and provide a property valuation survey. And I should have brought one of the books, I have like 10 of them on my desk right now. But they will go and they will look at every building that you are covering, they will look at every building that you own, to make sure that the ones you want to provide property coverage for are listed. And then they'll give us some values and then we'll be able to right size your property valuations. That is kind of our answer to making sure you've got appropriate values. On the years that you don't get a survey, we trend your, your property values, just like your commercial carrier currently does. That kind of helps us possibly not keep up with inflation, especially if it does what it did the last few years with COVID and things like that. But at least it, it will get us close. We don't have any co-insurance penalties or provisions or anything like that. This is kind of our answer to those types of things. Obviously, every year, we would encourage you to review those values and make adjustments as you see as appropriate, but that's kind of how we will posture that program. On that member benefit sheet, we already talked about the government practices hotline credits. You will see on the summary, we did again, offer you some credits. A lot of that is based on your participation in the loss control surveys through the Work Comp Fund. Again, that relationship really does help you come across over here. Did Wanda have a question?
Wanda, do you have a question?
I do, I do know, I'm sorry.
Okay, sorry. So that is the, that's that sheet. There's also included in that, that left side of that packet, a cyber liability summary, so we do have cyber coverage built in. The cost is just built into our governmental, our general liability line of coverage. Right now, that coverage is a $500,000 aggregate per year with a $100,000 deductible. We do have a few members who purchase standalone coverage and that is something we could certainly run a quote for you for, if that's what you decided to do. There's an enhanced crime summary, so our blanket crime coverage is a million dollar.
Which one are you?
Oh, still on the left side, so you're way ahead of me.
Okay, all right, I got it.
You're way ahead of me, Dan.
Speed it up.
Yeah, right? It's jumping ahead, getting to the good stuff. So that enhanced crime summary, it's got our logo on the top in the upper, right, left hand corner, okay. So basically, our enhanced crime coverage, it's a million dollar limit with a $0 deductible, that's the employee dishonesty coverage. The legislature did authorize the use of the enhanced crime coverage, that blanket crime coverage to satisfy the fiduciary bonds are statutorily required. So as long as the limit is sufficient. The nice part about blanket coverage is it covers all your full time, part time employees and all your appointed and elected officials, so not just those people who need it. Everybody, you know, is covered, so. And finally, I did tuck in the back of that left side, just a comparison spreadsheet, because we've been here, this is the fourth year now. So I just kind of wanted to put out there some of the different contribution dollar amounts that we have offered you in the past. And then showing you how that correlates with your operating expenditures, which is our basis for your liability contribution. And then your property values, which is the major component in that section. And that kind of looks like, it's just a spreadsheet, it's nothing super fancy, just some columns and stuff like that. So it kind of gives you an idea of where, where we've been, where we are, what our rates have done. Because you, you can see kind of the correlation between your operating expenditures and where we are with our contribution amounts. So if you don't have any questions about the left side, we'll jump over to the right side, which is where everybody wants to be, because that's where all the numbers are. So we've talked about, you've heard in the past, you've heard even this evening about liability coverage. So if you have claims that you know about, they are likely already reported, those will stay with your current carrier. We have in the past quoted some retro coverage, which would be coverage for if a claim is made, if you come over to the pool, if a claim is made, then we would be able to pick those up if the retro coverage reaches back. But if you already have coverage or if you've always already reported those issues, then you shouldn't need that to purchase that coverage. If you know of a situation, then that needs to be reported to your current carrier. Regardless of if you went to the, to the SDPA or if you went to a different commercial carrier, that, that's just general. That, that's just general practice. If they're already reported though, that cover just set with, with EMC and your current carrier. So the page five, oh, and we did quote, so that, that's, that's first stapled set, that just kind of gives you the overall view. We've quoted your $1 million limit, we've quoted three and we've quoted six because early on in the process, you had asked about what other counties were doing. And we have 10 of the top 12 largest counties in the state. You guys are in that top 10, so we gave you some of those comparisons historically. So this is just for your comparison sake, but we will offer you any one of those limits. We do not do an umbrella policy. If you want 6 million, then that's your per occurrence limit. We don't have aggregates. If you have, we hope you never have a limits case, however, if you have 1, 3, 5, 6 million dollar claims in one year, you get the full limit amount for all of those. Commercial insurance works a little differently.
And when do we make this decision?
So we can, we're fine with the 28th. If that's when you're going to make your decision, there's absolutely no problem with that. We just, really, we need to know by the, the close of business on the 29th because your coverage would start at 12:01 a.m. on the first. We just need to let our reinsurance carriers know, hey, they, they are on board. They're aware that we're quoting you. We just need to confirm, yep, we're on it. And then also, if you did have a claim over that long weekend, then claims people would know as well that you came over. Everything else in there is, I believe, pretty self-explanatory. I've got your summary quote, all of the pricing. On property, that, the, the last few stapled packages and pages of your packet is all of your property schedules. We worked with Patty to get that information and I thank you so much for all of your work. It's, I know it gets to be a lot and I apologize for that, but I am thankful that you're willing to help get me that information so we can provide these quotes. I will say, I just want to point out, for property, we do not have a wind hail deductible. We, whatever your all other perils coverage deductible is, and I think this year, we've got it quoted at the five, which is what your all other peril is, yeah, 5,000. You do have some locations with a thousand dollar deductible, that's fine. If you wanted to change any of those, we can do that at any time. But $5,000, if there's a windstorm, hailstorm, because that's the type of claims South Dakota has in the Midwest, $5,000, one deductible per occurrence regardless of the number of locations involved. So that is something that, it's been on the commercial market radar for a while. It is something that we have pushed back on. As that becomes a potential for members within the SDPA, we are also looking at other options for our members to help offset some of that because it's really hard to budget a percentage deductible or a multiple different wind hail deductible versus, we know we have a one $5,000 deductible if a hailstorm or tornado goes through, right? So we're looking at some, some different options with that. I mentioned before, we don't have co-insurance. We don't have a margin clause. It is blanket coverage, but again, we do want to make sure through our property survey that we've got enough of that property coverage. Right now, our inflation guard trend is 7.5% on years that you, excuse me, that you don't have a property survey. And then the final thing that I'm going to point out for you is that your auto list in our packet is only cars that you have auto physical damage on. So you will have a lot more that you own, but we don't, we don't keep a listing of vehicles that have auto liability. That's just a number that we collect at, in your renewal packet. It's an audit number. If you say you have 50 pickups and you only want auto physical damage on 10, you only tell me which 10 you want auto physical damage on. The other 40 are auto liability. We, we give you your general cards, you make copies, you put them in your vehicles and you're good to go. Okay? Are there any questions?
How many other counties in the state of South Dakota are insured with South Dakota Public Assurance Alliance?
Right now, we have 57 of 66 counties. We are quoting two. I've got arrangements to work with a couple others over the upcoming months because their coverages will renew either in June or next January. So I'll be working with at least two in the local area here that we don't currently have that are certainly interested in moving over. And I will tell you, a lot of the incentive for counties to move is the law enforcement access to LLRMI. Having those sample policies and procedures is something that I've actually been called by sheriffs, asking if just their department can come to the pool to get access to that. The way the statutes work, they aren't a separate entity where I could bring them in as their own public agency, so we've not been able to do that yet. So we just need to get the rest of the math to work so that they can come on board as The numbers that we've given do not include any agent commission. If Roger did decide that he wanted to continue to work with the county and you came to the pool, then you could still do that. It would just be a relationship, a, a commission amount that you would work out with him. Some of our members do a percentage commission, some do a flat fee. We just collect that on top of the contribution and then we pay that out to him. Lots of members have agents, some do not. It's, it's strictly your preference. I will say Roger is one of the good ones I've worked with and I worked with Roger when I was at Claims. My husband has worked with Roger because my husband's a claims adjuster, so I do have the utmost respect for Roger, so.
No.
I have none.
Okay. Well, my card is in your packet. If you have questions, you can call, email or text anytime and we can, I'll come back on the 28th in case you have any final questions before you make any decisions. You said 1 o'clock, that's not going to be a problem at all.
Did you say 57 counties you have or did you?
Yes.
57 entities?
57 counties. We have 461 entities across the state. And if you're interested, our, our audited financials are posted on the website every year, so you can go back and take a look at how we're doing financially. Board of Directors is, is base, is members. You know, we have four counties that hold seats on our Board of Directors. So something to, to say about who's governing what we do in South Dakota.
Okay.
Okay? Well, thank you so much.
Thank you for your time.
Yes, and have a Merry Christmas.
I'm sure we will study in this.
What could be better than this?
Thank you. Next item, Yankton Library Foundation, Dana and Ann.
Good evening. I'm Ann Cluff. I am representing the Yankton Community Library Foundation this evening. Dana Schmidt could not be here, but really, this is the foundation and not the library itself that's coming before you this evening. I do have with me though, Mary Pat Byerly, who is on the Board of Trustees for the library and she is our liaison to the foundation and so is she is with me this evening. I'm coming before you tonight for a twofold purpose, to inform you about the Community Library Foundation and our current activities and also to make a request for funds to support our current activity. And I had provided some information to you both through a fundraising letter that we sent out to a small group of library supporters to do some fundraising and also a proposal that we received from the University of South Dakota, their Government Research Bureau that we are having the city contract with to help us do a feasibility study and needs assessment in our, in our support of our activities for the coming year. Just to give you a little background, the foundation for the library was formed back in 2009. It was, it consists of 10 volunteers. We are all strictly volunteers on the board. We serve three-year terms. We meet on a monthly basis now. And our mission is to raise money and receive gifts and bequests and to increase public awareness for the need of a new state-of-the-art facility to meet the needs of the community in our region for years to come. And this actually started, like I said, back in 2009, it was established. It was the current mayor at the time, Dan Specht, had appointed a task force and tried to proceed with looking at a new library, but for, and they did quite a bit of work back at that time, but due to a number of factors with board members changing on the city commission and also some other emergency things, that became more priority, it kind of got put on the back burner. But the, the idea of a new library facility has actually been on the city of Yankton's five-year capital budget plan for many, many years. So it just hasn't happened. But we do feel that now is the time to pursue looking at creating a state-of-the-art facility. And our first step in doing that is to do a feasibility and needs assessment. And again, as I mentioned, the city, we have met with them as a foundation and we've met with the Board of Trustees and also there's friends of the library who also provide fundraising in smaller dollars, but they help support like summer reading programs and some equipment and things like that that supplement the city budget. Anyway, so I'm coming before you to just tell you about the fact that we are enlisting the Government Research Bureau out of USD to help us with a needs assessment. We will start in January and it will consist of doing online surveys, there'll be mail-out surveys and also focus groups. And we're trying to do the most in-depth research that we can to gain as much information as we can from the community and region, our service areas, so that we can see, number one, what type of facility our community wants and also what are they willing to support financially. So those are our goals for the coming year. And what I would like to do, besides informing you and answering any questions you might have about the foundation, is to also put in a request for your buy-in in this feasibility study by requesting a $2,000 contribution towards our efforts. The city of Yankton has budgeted in their 2024 budget, $20,000. And the feasibility study is going to be $36,500 approximately and the foundation is raising money for that, our share, for our balance. And we come before you this evening to ask if you would consider a contribution of $2,000 towards that. So I'm open for any questions?
Didn't we just give the library $20,000?
That's through the city.
That is through the city, correct. That is an annual share for services provided to the county and that is separate. The foundation is a separate entity. We are our own 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization and we established that back in 2009. It is a fundraising arm for the library, but it is not to supplant money from the city for city operations of the library. This is above and beyond and it is also to restrict the funds that it only goes towards a building project or, you know, some type of building improvements. So, does that help clarify?
So, I don't have a problem giving you $2,000 to do the feasibility study to build a brand-new, state-of-the-art library. The only thing that I would request if we do this, if the rest of the commission decides to do this, is that we work out a program so that the constituents that live outside of the city limits of Yankton do not have to come into town and buy a library card for $20 on addition to what we as a county donate and generate to the library. That's my, that's, that's my concern.
And I understand your concern. I can't promise that not being, since I'm a volunteer and I'm, I'm not here on behalf of the city, but I could sure put in that.
But if the city is, or if the county is buying into the program, I think that our constituents have the same right to that library as what any citizen from the city has.
Okay, I will pass.
And as a foundation member. As a foundation member, you should be able to bring that to the, to the library board or the city or whoever you need to talk to and make that, make that very well known.
I can make that pitch to them. I can't promise anything, of course.
Can you remember how many out of?
Yes, I, I do know the number. We have a total of 5,512 memberships at the library and of that, 883 are the county. So they are about 16%.
You are going to give up that money for, the math didn't work, for the $2,000.
No, I understand what you mean, yeah. I, I do know that, you know, the current, you know, the 20,000 I believe that you, you know, provide to the city makes up, I think, about a 3% of their total budget.
What I'm saying, what I'm saying is, is if, if.
Give me a minute, Wanda.
If, if the county has to donate $30,000 to the, to the, to keep the library open once it's built, that's fine. I want to, I want to negotiate a number that we can all live with that says that the, the county constituents in the county don't have to come into town and buy a $20 library card to utilize that facility when we are already donating funds to the facility.
I will pass that on. Like I said, that is something between the city, you know, and not the foundation, but I, I hear you completely.
Wanda, go ahead and state your question or your point.
Well, the sign as you drive into Yankton says there's 14,400 roughly citizens in Yankton. Apparently only 5,000 total citizens use the library, of which 800 are out in the county. Do we really need a ultra-cool state-of-the-art library for the 4200 people that choose to use the library?
Well, that is the question we want to ask the constituents, the community. That is why we are doing the feasibility study and needs assessment. There, a lot has changed in 50 years since our current facility was built and technology is a big part of that, but space needs, parking needs, there, there's many different things to address. But we want to hear from the community, from the public, what it is that they would like to see.
Does that 5,000 people in queue include the inmates that are located at the Community Work Center that go there and hang out during the day and make job applications via the internet?
I can't speak to that specifically. I do know that they have an outreach program. They try to reach out to many different constituents in the community, the elderly population. I don't know specifically with the prison or the inmates.
Mr. Chair, go ahead.
I, I, I think also the one, one slight correction too, if the library is open to all residents, the 5,000 cardholders are just the people who are actually getting cards and renting things.
Correct.
Like there's still a lot of.
Oh, it's open to everybody.
That do still visit the library and utilize the library without even having a, having a card.
That is correct.
Mr. Chair, you know, I got, I had the opportunity to serve on the library board for a few years and I really do appreciate it. I guess I'm, I'm reading through here and, and the plan is to contact 2,000 citizens to get 400 responses back?
Actually, that is incorrect. The, the proposal we are, have accepted is option two, which will do 4,000.
Correct.
We're trying to reach out to 4,000, get at least 4,000 surveys out there, plus there will be an online survey where people can access it and do the survey online, so anybody can take it. But we will be mailing out a survey. But we, we do want as much input as we can get and anyone can go on, you know, from the service area.
Could we request that at least, you know, a percentage of those go to users outside of the municipality within the county? Could that be a request because we may very well see that a lot more people in Riverside Acre or the Lake area or the rural areas want to use the library and, and I think that's just better for everybody. I know it's been a little point of contention, you know, that people outside have to pay, but I'd rather this be a big team effort and get input from everybody moving forward.
I like that idea of, as we kind of look at the numbers here, 16% of the cardholders are county residents and not city residents. Currently, our $20,000 annual contribution is only 2% of the library's budget.
That's correct.
And so kind of looking at those numbers like, you know, it'd be nice, yes, to see if like we could get 10% of those mailouts getting dispersed around the county so that again, we can get a lot of, especially like the. so that, again, we can get a lot of, especially like the Lakeside area, you know. They're really, they're really close into, close to the city, and, you know, they're all county residents.
Absolutely. And I believe that we will do, when we meet with the Research Bureau, that we will do everything we can to include anyone from the, the whole county area, the service area. And especially, I think, with the online survey, that would probably be the most feasible. But we will talk about that as far as mailing surveys, too.
And then also speaking to this, as, as John's comments is, too, is like as you, as we formulate this survey, and we're trying to figure out, you know, what's the best services the library is. You know, we should really see, you know, how much more county residents would be utilizing it if there was no fee, was no card fee.
Sure.
So that would be an interesting part of the survey that we could definitely add.
That's a good point.
If we could make suggestions.
Sure. Yes, that's a good point. Thank you. Any other questions?
No, I would make a motion, I would make a motion that we appropriate $2,000 to this feasibility study for the Yankton City Library.
I'll second it.
Foundation.
Foundation. Foundation, yes.
Have a motion and a second for their discussion. That's a, come out of Commissioner's budget?
That's fine. Yep, that could come out of Commissioner's budget.
Maybe we can use the money we saved for the pictures.
There you go.
Perhaps. All in favor, say aye.
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 Pose, pose the same motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Mr. Shalajik. Bring us good news.
Yep, well, this is just the joint agreement for, between the Yankton County and the state for the federal grant that we received from, for the Jim River Bridge, Stone Church Bridge. Guys have any questions on it?
Now, do we, a question that might be, we still have to pay the state, the contractors excise tax on this project. Is that, do, do, do you get that, or do you, do you know that? I believe we do, don't, don't we?
We get a bill, I don't know, we get a bill from the state for our share on this. Do we pay the excise tax?
Yeah, okay.
That I don't know.
That was a, is that what Clay County was doing? It's, yeah, so, just so, I, I believe it's a 3%. I'm not sure, but we have to pay a portion of this back to the state for the excise tax, so. But no, I think this is a good agreement. I appreciate your and John's efforts on getting this federal grant. It's a pretty big.
And just for, just for public's knowledge, the estimated cost of the bridge is $15.5 million. And our cost is, is 18% of that. And, and this, this, the big grant that we applied for last couple of weeks ago is going to take care of 80% of, 80% of that, as long as we get that bid, so. So.
If you want to realize what inflation was, what was, what, three years ago? This was a $3.5 million bridge. Now it's a 15.5, same bridge.
Inflation's only 3%.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, 300%.
And this grant does not have a cap, so if it would come in higher, well, it's gonna cover it. We still have to pay 18% whether it's 12 million or 20 million.
I'd move to approve the DOT funding agreement.
I'll second.
Motion by Dan. Second by Ryan. Discussion?
Thanks for you guys' efforts.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose the same motion carries. Thank you, Mike. Let's talk about duck, dust lock procedure. Dan?
Thank you. Sure, we'd be happy to.
Well, thank you, John, for inviting me to come tonight, and you all and the Board of Commissioners here to, I want to talk about what we do with dust control. We, our formal name is Environmental Dust Control. We're based out of Winnebago, Minnesota, and down here at Lyons, Nebraska. We have a satellite tank farm down here. I've been in this business along with my farming operation for about 24 years going on now. So I took a break after '17 and kind of quit it, and then kind of re-hit the company two years ago. So we're, we're back at it, doing similar formulations than what we did before. This technology all started back about the end of '97, '98 with some USB funding into the University of Minnesota, is where we come up with some of the formulations. So what we're doing, we're taking a, a part of the soybean oil products. We're breaking it down into two particular potions that we like to use. We're using what they call BOP along with a black hester. And we're just basically coming up with a formulation that we're just blending it down. And it's really not super scientific, but we have enough experience to know what does work and what does not work. So today, I think what we have is the best formula we've ever had over the, the number of years. So a lot of people look at us as more of a surface stabilizer, if you will. We're only going to scarify down about 3/4 of an inch to an inch, and then we're gonna oil the top of that surface. The oil will soak in about a half inch or so, so that's the surface you'll be driving on. I've played with the rate for, forever, four ounces a square foot to two ounces a square foot. It just seem like anywhere from Canada to Texas, it's about three and a half ounces a square foot. It just doesn't seem like the ground is gonna take anymore. You put any more on, it's gonna sit there in a puddle. It's not gonna do you any good. You put a little bit light on, it could use more. So we just balanced that thing about a 3.5. So longevity-wise, we talk in terms of variables. I mean, this thing was really variable about that kind of farm. I've got campgrounds that have made seven years. I've got parking lots that have made two years with trucks twisting on it. I've got county roads that won't hardly make it a year. So it's really variable. We really stress, I mean, the roads we drove today, John, the harder the base, the better it's gonna last. It's all about the base underneath any product like this. So, well, we, we really, I push. I personally go out and try to look at every road if I can. But if not, I ask a lot of questions about what kind of surface we got. We don't really want any soft oils in it. We really want it bladed up nice and even. We like a nice crown. Yeah, we're fussy on our base. I've actually gone out to jobs and said, you know, you guys, you gotta, you're gonna have to work on this road a little bit. You're gonna have to build your base up. I, I'll be back next year. I'll be back later in the summer whenever you can get your base set. So I'm pretty fussy with that. What I've seen today, there are good hard roads. Sound like the probably intention's gonna be to put another two, three inches down and get them in shape and bring them on into a little bit nearer the road. My experience has been, I've been on 28-foot roads. I've been on 30-some-foot roads. I've been on 16-foot roads and 14-foot campgrounds and all that kind of thing. 22 to 24 just seem like with trucks and, you know, the trains were pulling today. It just seemed like if you can keep it to 24, keep the crown out, keep it from pushing out, that's about the best water drainage that I've come up, that I've seen in my experience. So strongly encourage folks like what we're talking, 22 to 24-foot top. Pricing on this is, obviously it's a commodity, so we price off the soybean oil market every, every winter. I try to lock in prices during the winter to get inventory kind of locked in. We're gonna back off a little bit from a year ago, so my brokers are kind of talking about similar, but I think we're gonna pick back. I know this afternoon, John, we talked about 12, 13 cents. I, I did some figuring, but right now I think I can probably pull out a 12 and a quarter cent, square foot kind of number. To that, you gotta add the freight to where, wherever your location is, and then also the 3/8 chips over the top.
How much, how much does operator experienceability have to do with the longevity of this?
I think, you know, spraying spray. I mean, I'm a farmer. A lot of people know how to spray. The spraying of the oil really isn't too tough to do. What I found out is the, the process. And we come in, we'll bring in a DOT truck that we have with a belly blade on it. We're gonna scarify that off. We're gonna, you know, hate to say it, but we're gonna scarify the top off. I only want about a quarter inch of fluff on top, so to speak, and the rest is gonna be out there in the shoulder.
I guess I'm asking about the necessity for the crown?
Gotta have it. Gotta drain the water off.
Okay, if we don't have it now?
Gotta have it.
We're gonna build it.
Gotta have it. Because what happens is if you're flattened out, we can get that oil to soak in on the dry day that we put it down, but that water's gonna sit there in puddle. Well, anytime you leave a water, drive through a water puddle, you're gonna hydrolock. It's gonna force that water down in the ground, and you're just gonna eventually break it out. Once you get a hole started, that, that hole fills up with water. You hydrolock it again, it just keeps pushing out. You got a heck of a deep hole, so. No, I'm very fussy on surface. I'm just gonna be upfront. So, yeah, process is to, procedures are to scarify first. And we'll put the oil down, and we're gonna come in. We also have a spreader on the same truck. We'll spread the rock down about a pound and a quarter a square foot. These are 3/8 chips or P-rock or whatever we can get your hands on here. Here we have access to everything that there is. I will say also, I do recommend the quartzite, just because the material's hard. Limestone is soft. So longevity-wise, we're gonna have a lot longer, longer opportunity with a better surface for a longer period of time with quartzite. So a little more money, but it sure does work better. It really does. Obviously, with soybean oil, it is, there's all kinds of information out here. It's environmentally friendly, it's non-corrosive. The oil goes in, it does not move where a water-based product does. We do water-based also, but the, there's a difference between oil base and water base. And the oil's very, very stable, especially around lake roads, around waters and lakes and rivers and things. We've done quite a bit of that work. Where, where we get the oil, oil drove in there, that first day when it's dry, it's just gonna be there. It's not gonna go anywhere, so take good luck with that. I guess so far, any questions?
So if you were looking at cost and, and thinking about the number of people on a road, if somebody decides that they want to do a mile in front of their house, do you do that stuff or not?
Well, I'd be honest with you, you know, I get a lot of calls from private farmers in Iowa, especially. Iowa's loaded with the chloride over there, and South Dakota, Minnesota, North Dakota, Wisconsin. Obviously, a county can buy tax-exempt. And I got a lot of counties, most of them. If a farmer wants to put it down, he'll call me up, what's it gonna cost me? I said, well, are you working through the county or are you gonna pay it yourself? They're paying it themselves. I gotta charge them tax. Just the way it is. They gotta pay the tax.
What's the re-realistic expectation for a county road that sees an average number of, how long will this last? I know it depends on a lot of conditions, but what should we, what's your guarantee, I guess?
Well, guarantee, I, I sure talk about getting you through the winter. You know, the hard thing is when spring comes around, I mean, are you gonna have a lot of moisture in that road? Are you gonna have a lot of soft oils popping up? You got a lot of frost deep down?
Not this winter, probably.
No, I've got guys that are running two and three years. I've got guys that'll make it through the winter. You know, it's all about, I talked to with Mike and John. I mean, blading of snow, I mean, boy, if you just can skim it and not get down hard on it, you got a chance of saving it for the next year. That's kind of a critical factor.
That's my concern about operator skill.
Is this something that our county, or do we need special equipment for this? Or is, or is the equipment that we have currently able to do the majority of this?
We, Mike and I and, and Dan discussed this evening. We've actually got all the equipment to, to handle this. The only thing is, is we would, I guess I would feel more comfortable if, if we had Dan come down and did our first test a couple of miles. And, you know, once, once we know that the product is gonna be stable and work, we can, with Dan's ability and knowledge and training, we can, we can do our own application at, on other projects.
Once we get a, get a roll on, you know, the experience, mostly, I did a lot of work in North Dakota through the, the really wild times back in, in 2000 and 2010 and beyond. And I, you know, once you get a, a county crew kind of broke into what we're doing, we're scarifying, we're oiling, we're rolling, we could roll it back if you want to, it's not necessary. But once everybody on the crew kind of gets the idea and the feel for how this is gonna work and how it's gonna result, it's, my job is so much easier than next year. It just falls into place really easy. So I have every confident that with the crew out here in Yankton, why, you know, you're breaking up, you can handle this kind of a job along with other jobs you got going with contractors when they come in in May, June, and July. So, yeah.
John, what were a couple of the roads that you guys looked at today?
We looked at Kaiser Road and we looked at Road 434.
Are they good prospects?
Yep, absolutely, yeah. There's already, nice crown to them already. I know Mike talked about wanting to bring them in a little bit, to bring them into, what, 24, 24-foot tops? So, yeah, that is looking good. Yeah, they need a little gravel on them, so obviously we'll put a little gravel on them and let it rain. You know, of course, we want the new gravel to set base and harden up before we come with the oil. So give it a month or so, the two, three rains, and then we'll be ready to go.
And, and my, my thought is, is, is those two, that two and a half mile stretch of 434 and Kaiser Road is probably one of the most traveled areas in, in Yankton County. And if this stuff, if we can make this stuff work on those, those two and a half miles, then I think we've got a good process for the future in Yankton County.
Should go as almost a worst-case scenario for how long it lasts.
Yes, that's, that's, that's my thought.
Probably, probably not a ton of heavy trucks, but a lot of vehicles.
A lot of travel.
Which is a good point.
I was gonna ask that question. Is there a lot of trucks on that road out there that we drove today, or is it pretty much just?
Truck traffic is not very heavy on that road.
That makes a difference.
But, but there's, there's 88 mailboxes in that 200, two and a half mile stretch. So there's a lot of traffic on that road.
And that's, the, the two reasons we're putting the rock down. Number one is, I mean, we're putting the rock down right behind the oil truck, probably within about five minutes. So the sooner you get the traffic on the road, the happier everybody is, number one. But number two is, I'm finding that with that rock in there, once that oil dries out and turns into a tar, the rock is all part of that tar. So your wear surface is all different than just driving on the oil itself. So longevity is just a huge factor. It's three to four times longer than what it would be. I just used to do straight oil and drive away. Well, no, we do, we do rock. You gotta put rock over the top nowadays. So that's one thing that's changed in the business is putting, it's like we're seal coating gravel roads, I guess you could say. But, yeah, I've had guys ask about, just, can we just put the oil down like we do chloride? And, you know, no, not interested. So as long as you spend this much money on oil versus what chloride is, let's just do the best job we can and do it right, and just get it done based on what we know is gonna, is gonna work.
Mike, are your, is your crew capable, ready, or to do this kind of work?
Yeah, it's similar to, we've done the baseline core, so we got experience and the process.
I think it's very similar to what they did out at West, on West 11. The only difference is, is it's not a double chip seal. They're, they're, they still scarified it and put a base coat down. So that's basically what we're gonna do here is put a base coat down and, and, and the soybean oil, which is, which is a, a product that is raised and grown around here and, and agricultural friendly, so.
We got a nice, a nice plant coming in at Norfolk, I think, for, as a source for.
Yep, I've been talking to those guys. I, obviously for me, I'm trying to buy feedstock, and I'm hoping between Norfolk and maybe the one up here by Mitchell, I don't know. You know, every plant does their own thing with their own products, you know, between the oil and the meal. I don't know. I'd like to be able to buy it here in South Dakota, but we got, we're buying it out of Iowa is where we're coming up. So AGP's been real cooperative with us. We have to have another step done in the process to get these products out, so, yeah.
Well, it's very interesting, and I think John's gonna keep us involved.
Okay?
Yes.
No, appreciate that. Appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you.
Any questions?
I'll get ahold of you.
Okay.
Thanks for coming down, Dan, and presenting us with this product.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Next item, Gary, ordinance adoption solar, second reading.
Yes, this is, excuse me, this is the second reading ordinance number 23ZNO8, establishing permanent zoning regulations for Yankton County, South Dakota. With such regulations being set forth in the document titled Yankton County Ordinance 2020 Amendment to Yankton County Ordinance 2020 Definitions, Article 5 Agricultural District, Article 6 Low Density Residential District, Article 7 Moderate Density Residential District, Article 8 High Density Residential District, Article 9 Manufactured Home Park District, Article 10 Commercial District, Article 11 Lakeside Commercial District, Article 12 Rural Transitional District. Article twelve rural transitional district, and the newly proposed Article twenty-nine solar energy conversion systems, hip corns with provision of chapter eleven dash two nineteen sixty-seven C D C S D C L and amendments thereof and per repeal of all resolutions and ordinance in conflict therewith. Last meeting, we changed a couple of the setbacks and you got the updated version of that. And so now, um, we can discuss if there's any other questions, and I guess we have one citizen that would like to do a public call.
Hi, good evening, um, we're at Farnshire in Yankton. Um, I enjoyed being part of the, uh, process of working through this language and looking at this. I think it was very well done, professionally handled. I thought there was a lot of good feedback and discussion that, that came about in the process. Uh, I'm very happy with what I'm looking at here. I think the setbacks are to the, to the, maybe to the river, I think is a little excessive, but I think overall, I mean, we could nip pick. But I think what we got right here is a great starting point. The fifty KW and below being the highly, the most highly valued opportunities from a retail consumption savings side is just unencumbered, which is great. In this day and age, there's so many certifications, D L seventeen forty-one, the I triple E and all that stuff. This is not junk equipment anymore, that people know what they're doing, know what they're doing. So I think the, the less than fifty KW is best handled, just leave it alone. The electrical specter will catch it, there's not gonna be any stuff that's, that's out there. The only, I think the first thing out of the box, this looks good, we've got some good common sense, um, restrictions. We're open for business on the small side, on the big side, I think there's some common sense things that everybody's gonna wanna see. And I think there, everybody's gonna be asking, asking them to show that kinda stuff. It's not a wide open county to be taken advantage of either, so I think this strikes a good balance. I think the biggest challenge is gonna be the utilities, because they don't want any of this. B Y Electric in particular has a like egregious interconnection policy that really needs some updating. And you guys as a primary customer are obviously in a better position. You know, maybe one of those pass the world along kinda things. That interconnection policy is, is archaic. It basically consists of, they're gonna buy all your power at three cents and you're gonna buy all theirs at fifteen. And that's net billing, it's not even that metering, so we had that in Nebraska ten years ago.
Can we have you turn the mic on?
Sorry.
Where's Wanda at?
Thank you. Yeah, so that's a policy thing. You guys have certainly done your part, I think, in, in leaving that stuff alone. The economics, I think, are there, state regulations are reasonable, but that interconnection policy's kind of a bear. There's some ways with the technology, you can go around it with storage and do some different things, but, um, it adds cost. On the big side, I think you're well covered, um, very reasonable, nothing excessive on the requirements, I think, from suppliers, so they should be pleased.
Rob, why don't you give us just a little bit of your background in, in what you're, what you're talking to us about?
Sure, um, on the solar stuff, we've been involved with solar probably back to oh, three or oh, four in northeast Nebraska. We had a, we had a small farm down there that we got into a little bit of a disagreement with the utilities and ended up, um, making my own power for fifteen years. And in the process of that, said, hey, there's not a lot of information about this, kinda got into the business. We did, did a megawatt of interconnected small systems in Winnebago. We've done, um, four hundred KW in Flandre here with, uh, with the city and interconnection with the city. And that went pretty reasonable, there's a lot of variation in what's out there for interconnection policies. And South Dakota's definitely further behind with this, and Nebraska, I haven't worked in both states for a long time. So, I try to do my part on the small systems, I kinda have a specialty on the off-grid and battery stuff just 'cause of my own experience, but I'd recommend that, that's not for the pain of heart. But there's a lot of low hanging fruit with some interconnection, if the policy is reasonable. So, any other questions or, no, this is, I think you guys, I think it's a great work product, it's a great place to start.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you for your public input.
Yeah, I appreciate the opportunity of just being.
Any other questions? Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion to, uh, approve.
I'd move to approve the solar, uh, the, well, let me restate this. I would move to approve the second, um, application of the, I can't even read this, the adoption of the solar second reading, but it does include other stuff, so.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
A second.
Have a second by Ryan. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Pose the same. Motion carries.
Thank you. Motion of Wanda's okay?
Next item on agenda is the West Yankton Transportation Study Final Report, Bill.
Good evening, all, uh, my name is Bill Trell with S R F. Let Gary get that cranked up. That the, uh, the purpose that I'm here tonight is to pretty much just give you a, I'll call it a final summary. I mean, we've had two public meetings, the last one being in September. And in that meeting, we talked about the, the recommendations from the study and, um, nothing has changed. We completed the, the study document in October and, uh, Gary then reminded me that I should come talk to you. So I'm here to talk to you. So, um, and again, what I wanted to do is just kinda hit on, uh, the high points of the, of the recommendations since there has been, um, a, uh,
There's a mouse here.
Sorry. Okay, uh, just kinda reiterate what our study area is, it's shown there in the map that we're essentially from the, the reservoir in the river on the south end up to South Dakota fifty on the north, where fifty-two then comes back around and heads to the north on the west side of the study area and then on the east side where it's City Limits Road. So that, that is our entire study area, but I think that if you've gone to any of the public meetings, a lot of the conversation was on the area that would be between then, uh, well, the Deer Boulevard, Timberland Boulevard corridors. So, how about if we just go this way? So what are the things that we had, we had focused on? We looked at traffic operations, um, along each of the inner, or the, the key intersections within the study area. So essentially along the state routes that would have a significant, um, county road or, or township road that may intersect with it. We looked at, at crashes, um, we looked at crashes briefly, I should say, because they're really, you know, that was one of the interesting things is there really isn't all that many crashes and the bulk of what crashes are, I gotta believe everybody could guess what they are, is animal hits. And we haven't taught them how to, uh, safely cross a road yet, so there's not a whole lot that we really do with those. And we also looked at access, um, all of the access locations, so that would be a field access. That would be a driveway to a residence, that would be multiple driveways to some of the retail businesses. And we came up with recommendations for that, so let's just kinda get to that. And hitting first on the access points, uh, the map here, um, all the little yellow dots there are essentially an access point. And the, the, um, and we focused here on the, the state routes and the guidelines for the state are five access points per mile per side. And, um, I think that anybody that has driven any of the roads within the study area, you're gonna find a few more than, than five access points per side per mile. So what are your choices? We could go in and say, well, we're gonna go in and we're gonna try to consolidate as many driveways as we can. Uh, that doesn't really work in rural residential areas, uh, trying to get, um, neighbors to share a driveway on a lot line. So we, we kinda gave up on that a long time ago. But I think the idea, the focus is gonna be going forward, that the DOT, um, will be looking much closer at, at those locations that a, a new development comes in, uh, redevelopment comes in. There will be additional conversations about, um, trying to better meet those access guidelines, um, at each of the locations. The positive is, again, I'd already talked about crashes, that generally when you see more access points, you see more crashes. We're not seeing a, a substantial number of crashes on any of the routes within the study area. Okay, just kinda briefly to hit on the summary of the recommendations, I think that, you know, most of the conversations throughout the entire study was, well, when are you gonna put a signal in a Deer Boulevard? And, um, we went around and around and around on that, that, that a lot of that comes down to really how you look at the numbers and how aggressively you look at particularly, uh, coming out of Deer Boulevard, the right turns that you come out from the north, coming back into Yankton. You talk to ten traffic engineers, you're gonna get at least five different answers on each of them, how do you really address those right turns? We took a little bit more of a conservative nature as we were working our way through the studies, so we accommodated or accounted for or took more of those right turns into account. So there is a recommendation to add a, a traffic signal at Deer Boulevard and, uh, South Dakota fifty-two that, uh, if you went to, I guess it probably wasn't really a, a, a state transportation improvement program meeting near here, but if you went to those that, and, and at, at the public meeting, um, we, we did say that in fiscal year twenty-four, that the DOT will put that in. And, um, I think as you're kinda thinking about, well, we haven't really seen anything going on there, that it's tied to the, uh, U S eighty-one improvement project that would go from South Dakota fifty down to Twenty-third Street. So when you start to see that one move, you know, you can look at the signal, it's gonna be tied to that, that particular project. Timberland Road that, that there, um, we, that we, and, and we looked at traffic forecasts out to the year twenty fifty. And when you really think about it, that the key of looking out to that year is there is the opportunity for a substantial amount of development in that area, south of fifty-two from the reservoir, um, back, um, towards, uh, towards Yankton. But the question is, is well, when might, if, when, um, will that development occur? And, uh, I, you know, that, that's a crystal ball that none of us really have. And, I don't know, maybe it comes back to the price of corn and soybeans, but, um, so we, we wanted to make sure we looked well into the future and twenty fifty, um, is, is that typical horizon year that the South Dakota DOT, uh, I guess, used in twenty-two and twenty-three. Now we're out to twenty fifty-five. And, uh, and that, that, we also, at South Dakota fifty-two and one fifty-three, that that is a location where we're seeing increases in volume, but there were no warranted actions there from a crash standpoint, from an operation standpoint, um, those kinds of things. But if I go back to Timberland, that, that there we are looking at, um, recommending a northbound right turn lane, but no change to the, uh, signal, uh, to the, uh, the intersection control. We also looked at, at, uh, in this one, we looked at relatively briefly, 'cause while, um, it's, it, it is the, the limit of our study area over there on West City Limits Road, that, that this is a, a, a study that we're focusing on the county. And there, the recommendation was to signalize that location, and that would be in addition to the, you know, the improvements that were done in twenty-three for the radiuses and things like that. And the last part of it is, is on South Dakota fifty, and I'll admit, this one surprised me a little bit. That'll, that the, the bulk of the growth that we've been observing in, in the area, um, between looking at traffic counts from twenty twelve up to traffic counts that we had, we had taken while we were, uh, putting the study together, that the South Dakota fifty corridor is the one that saw the most growth. I think most people would be a little bit surprised, thinking that, well, jeez, it has to be South Dakota fifty-two from the reservoir into town, but in reality, it was South Dakota fifty. And there, um, what we are, what we're looking at is the need for additional lanes and the DOT, uh, at some point in the future, and the DOT will do a more in-depth study on that one, uh, to determine whether or not they would want to go to a, a five lane divided, whether or not they would wanna go to, um, implement what they're calling as a super two, which essentially provides additional passing lanes, uh, to try to dissipate the, the platoons that build up over the course of time. Okay, uh, the, and then the other key element of the recommendations of the study, um, again, focusing on that potential development area uh, to the south of fifty-two, again, from the reservoir into town, our, our goal here was to look into the future and ask the question of, well, how might this entire area develop, assuming that the bulk of it would be residential and, uh, at a, at a much higher density of residential than you're gonna find in any of the other corridors in the county area. You can already see, and well, you already all know, that the, the level of density that we have in development on this very south end of this area, you know, there would be the expectation that development at that density could continue to occur within the remainder of the area. And, and the, the goal of our study was to establish a collector, an arterial framework plan to say, as or if the area, um, continues to develop, develops more into kinda the center area, we wanna make sure that we've identified, um, corridors where developer, developers would need to accommodate a higher level facility roads than you would put into a subdivision, uh, where most of them out there are, 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 um, you know, a relatively thin layer of asphalt, and that's about it. And, and that, that, the blue lines here, um, and, and the, uh, I guess the orange, the blue and the green are, are lines that, that demonstrate what we are recommending for that framework plan that gives us about a half a mile grid throughout the entire study area. Over here on the right-hand side, we had looked at a couple of different alternatives as we're, we're looking at, well, what are our opportunities over on the, the east end to improve, uh, the combination of the skewed intersection where Cho- um, um, Chalkstone comes into South Dakota fifty-two, but then also where Sister Grove and Chalkstone kinda meet, that that's also a pretty skewed intersection. And that as we were going through that process, we're asking the question as well, which of these really should be the primary? And the recommendation was essentially that, that Chalkstone would, would continue to be the primary road. We would adjust or recommend adjusting a little bit the radius as we get into the intersection of, of South Dakota fifty-two here, so that that becomes a little bit more of a right angle intersection, and we would maintain the, the concept of the connectivity back here up to the, what would be the extension of, of, uh, City Limits Road. We had also, uh, provided some recommendations for the, the section that we didn't see any locations where we would need more than a two-lane section. And that's the, that's the, the, the charm of having that, uh, half-mile grid is that we provide a number of different opportunities, uh, for the, the vehicles within the area to, to dissipate and to, to, uh, pick different alternatives based on their destination. And what we're assuming for our, our, our section or our, our top would be more of what we're looking at at a Deer Boulevard, where you would have, um, you know, the, the ditch section rather than, than what we're looking at at some of the more residential roads within the area. And the consideration of a little bit of a shoulder, because we're not recommending, um, the addition of or inclusion of, of multi-use trails within the development area, so we could get a little bit of a shoulder. There's that better opportunity, uh, for pedestrians or bicyclists to share that right-of-way a little bit. Again, that we're not anticipating a substantial amount of traffic on any one of the routes. So as we're, we're kinda, well, the bottom line is, is well, when is this gonna ha- occur? And, um, our answer has always been that the roads would be built as development occurs. And our answer has always been that the roads would be built as development occurs and that construction and and paying for those roads would be the responsibility of the developer. So that they would be responsible for in putting the roads in, which results in a essentially a piecemeal construction of those roads, which is the downside. Okay, if if there's additional county dollars out there to do that, okay, there's opportunity to build more of the mileage in one fell swoop. But I think we're all understanding that that is not the way that things are done in Yankton County. And that the other key element there is 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 maintenance. Understanding that maintenance isn't exactly zero. We had looked at a number of different alternatives of of essentially generating the dollars for maintenance. And that we had looked at the, there were there were two committees that essentially came together. One was in twenty-seventeen, one was in twenty-nineteen. Looked at the the cost of of road maintenance, looked at the at the the tax dollars that were generated, whether or not you were in a in a crap, townships, townships are either unorganized or organized. I got it. Okay, whether or not you were in an organized or unorganized township and and for the bulk of this area or for all of the area that we're focusing on with the improvements would be an unorganized township. You know, and we looked at, what are the options? Well, you could look at the secondary road tax. But I think from the the work that we saw from twenty-seventeen and twenty-eighteen is that those that the tax that would be generated through that means probably would not generate enough dollars to 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 pay for the maintenance, at least at the typical density that you were looking at in the county. Now here, we could have more density, more more residential properties. There might be a different answer there. But that, I think, is one of those things that you're just gonna have to think about and look at as you move to the to the future. We could go through the process of organizing the township and and raising the a tax levy. But I I gotta believe it's been a long time since a unorganized township in the county has been organized. So and and that, you know, is it feasible? Is it warranted? Those are the questions that we have to constantly ask moving forward. We could change things up a little bit. All of those roads could become county roads. But I, okay, I also worked on the twenty-fifteen transportation plan. I got a little bit of a history of, you know, that doesn't happen again in Yankton County. But we wanted to make sure it was on the list. And because, you know, the last thing we want to do is come into a meeting and says, and somebody will say, well, did you think about that? And we would say, well, no, we didn't really think about that one. But we just want to make sure that we have everything on the list. And again, coming at and asking this question, is it feasible? And is it warranted to do that? Because we understand that's a significant difference. We could then also create a road improvement district or a series of districts. And again, this really is gonna come back to how is the area going to develop, if it develops at all? And, you know, that that there, I think, getting a better understanding of how the area might develop and when, what kind of what steps would be important to also then figure out what is the go-forward on maintaining the the roads that would be constructed within the area.
Can we cut to the chase?
Okay, we're at the, that was the chase.
Okay, well, let's cut to the chase. My understanding is you're going to put a signal light at fifty-two and Deer Boulevard, correct?
Yes.
Other than that, all the other stuff is maybe it will happen if the properties out there develop, correct?
Correct.
Right, that's all we need to know.
Okay, that was the three-minute alternative.
I learned quite a bit, Wanda.
Well, I I listened to it the first time at one of the meetings and through the whole presentation then.
Good for you.
Was it better this time?
Well, it was a possibility, but happened a little longer.
Sorry about that.
I think the important thing and and the victory that we all got is is the traffic light in Deer Boulevard and fifty-two. And I know that's what a lot of citizens had wanted for safety concerns. And so it's a big accomplishment. It took many years to do, but, you know.
Well, I'm gonna I'm gonna add to that, because I think seeing the the blue lines out there, that there is a place, a starting place that we can go to and and have some guidelines on what a developer may we may want as a county, the developer to do.
Yeah, I think I think when you look at that map with the blue lines down in that area, that's something that we need to have, sort of. The planning and zoning needs to have that and always be aware of that when we are, we get new projects coming in. There's like, we need to somehow affect that type of transportation network down there.
I agree.
Now, those are section, Gary, are those section line roads?
Some, they're.
Okay.
Those are a whole half-section lines.
Okay, so it's a good planning guide for the future.
Yeah, so at least along the section lines, there's a little bit of right-of-way for a lot of it. Cool?
Because it gives us a basis to to fall back on and at least start our discussion with somebody that wants to come in with a special project. And say, this is what our study showed.
And but I'll also admit that a lot of the conversation that we had in the second public meeting was those folks that are living right along the river, you know, that that argument of we have one way in, one way out, what if something was to occur? This plan doesn't necessarily provide them with any relief until the, you know, there are significant parts of the framework plan or the framework network put together. And again, if that comes back to development, that pacing it with development, that could be a while.
Any other questions or comments?
I I'd just like to thank Bill and his and his group for putting something together down there because it obviously there was nothing, nothing beforehand. And now at least we have some kind of a blueprint that that we can, we can at least hang our hats on and say, here, this is what's gonna happen. Or this is what needs to happen.
I agree completely.
So thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Bill. Next is beacon enhancements.
Hello, everybody.
Hi.
Hello.
Okay. So I was asked to see if Geospatial would provide a three-year renewal option since it was discussed with some of their other products. And they came back with a proposal. When I was last here, we discussed doing some add-ons. And they they suggested to include those add-ons and offered a three-year fixed rate, including those add-ons. So currently, the one-year beacon renewal is thirteen thousand one seventy-six, as is. And with the add-ons of the enhancements of the sales, I gotta use the right term, the sales search tool and then the property tax module included, it would go to fifteen thousand one sixty-eight locked in for three years. We have seen, as everybody knows, everything is increasing. So that's a a benefit to lock that in for three years. This is a lower value, a lower cost than what was proposed with those add-ons due to the option of the three-year renewal contract. I did also receive, I believe it was all in the email or the packet of what was proposed, the add-ons. There was a letter from the Board of Realtors for Beacon that I received. And then just so you guys also know that we are still in the black even after this for twenty-twenty going forward. We are still, it is still not costing the county money. We are still making money off of it, which is a good thing for our subscribers and for our use within our office, that we have this capability to to use and available to everybody.
Are those add-ons for the Director of Equalization Office? Or are those add-ons for the Realtors?
So what I would suggest, after looking at a little bit depth, the sales search tool would be for subscribers. So that would be for anybody with a paid subscription. I would suggest, and I guess that would be up to you guys if you want to do that or not, I would suggest doing the property tax module, which is where your property taxes, where your money's actually going to be available to the public without having a subscription, a paid subscription, is what I would suggest. So that anybody can go on and say, okay, my total tax bill, what percentage is going to the county? And it's really nice how they have it. It breaks it down, your total bill, what percentage goes to which levy per year, per half a year, and then even further per day. So how much is the county getting of my tax dollars per day? Or the city, or my road district, or my unorg- my organized township, the school? All of that is, each line item on your, each levy that you have is broken down so that everybody can see where your money's actually going and what it's paying for.
You know, Michelle, I really, I really like that. And I think you did a great job doing that. And I think it would benefit so many people to realize that, you know, sixty sixty percent of your property tax doesn't go to the county, it goes to the school board and and it goes to these other entities. And then, you know, really, the county only gets twenty-seven percent. So a great job with that. And I think that for an extra thousand thirty-two dollars, that's money well worth it. And I would be in agree, agreeance to put that on the free so that everybody, maybe the first thing that comes up when somebody clicks on it. I think that's that's great. I guess the other ones, has there been any thought about increasing the subs? I guess I don't even know, what is a subscription right now for a year?
Yep, so last time we discussed that, monthly, we are five hundred, quarterly, one twenty-five, and annually, five, excuse me, did I say five hundred fifty? Monthly fifty, one twenty-five, quarterly, five hundred, annually. There's a one-time twenty-five dollar setup fee. The, I did look into cost, locked, talked to a lot of other counties, see what they did. We are kind of on the higher end of beacon cost right now. But with, after reading what the Realtors had sent in, they they are in support of that. I, we already have sent out twenty-twenty-four annual maintenance or annual subscriptions be just because it is that time of year, we have, we send them out at the beginning of the month when they're at, they end at the end of the month. So we already have people paid for starting twenty-twenty-four. The other thing is, is if, you know, if we do talk about an increase, I would suggest not much because we are on the higher end. There are other ways to, that other counties do charge instead of time. They do number of parcels clicked, number of records used. That has a lot more integration. We would have to go to an online payment option, which we'd have to set up with another vendor instead of, right now with, you can pay your taxes online with GovTech. We'd have to do a completely different vendor, set that all up, and then they also get a chunk of the fee. So.
How many subscribers do we have, like paid subscribers?
Paid subscribers, today we have forty, thirty-one yearly and eight quarterly. We did have one monthly that we, and it's all depends on how, when your, when your subscription's up, if you want to renew. We have some people who renew quarterly, but they've been subscribers since the beginning.
Sure.
So it just depends on their finances, too.
Yeah.
And so with a with a three-year fixed price, that that figures that for the next three years, this should operate in the black.
Yes, it will.
Even with these new features.
Yep, I had Patty run as of yesterday. We are, we have eighteen thousand dollars that we have generated in Beacon this year.
Do you, how does that work? Do you, does that, do you have to collect that? Does it go to to Beacon? Does does somebody come up and say, here's my check for the year, or how?
Yep, they they, there's a form for renewal.
And they come to your, you guys to do that?
Yep, they can mail us a check or we do it in our office.
And and you know, that that probably doesn't take a lot of time with forty subscribers. But it does take some time and somebody's gotta look over that, too. And I guess I'm I'm not really a huge fan of doing a three-year subscription. I absolutely support a one-year with some of these enhancements. The sales search, like you said, it sounded like the letter that these are types of features we want. Well, if if people want that, I think they can pay a little bit extra for it. I mean, that's probably not something your office is gonna use a.
We would use that quite a bit, actually.
It would probably be pretty suited to Realtors as well.
I would, I wouldn't necessarily say that. When we would, let's say during appeal times when somebody is looking at why my value increased, we could pull up their value and look right on the map exactly how the sales in their exact area within a certain amount of time, within a certain distance. Right now, we don't have that capability of, you know, I wanna go half a block or, you know, how many feet from my house for what is sales versus we can, with that sales search, we can do that. As well as you can see, there's a couple of different ways to view the sales. You can see the past two years of every single sale, whether it was a good sale or a bad sale. You see a whole complete list of all the sales that happened January of twenty-twenty-three.
What are the rest of the board's thoughts?
Well, I I think a three-year fix is a good idea. It just keeps that price stabilized. Working in software, the software price will go up every year. It's not like a normal inflation. But I I work with lots of different software companies that do software as a service. And doing a three-year fix definitely makes a lot of sense to me.
But if 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 we're gonna pay our our costs right now for the same apples-to-apples, it's thirteen thousand one seventy-six for fiscal year twenty-twenty-four.
That's correct.
Am I looking at that correctly?
Yep.
So then fifteen one sixty-eight is gonna be our, if we lock in for three years, apples-to-apples, we're getting the same amount for twenty-four at thirteen one seventy-sixes. We're gonna pay fifteen one sixty-eight?
The, no, the fifteen one sixty-eight includes the two new modules, the sales search tool and the property tax module.
But thirteen one seventy-six is not.
That's exactly what we have today.
I guess I I don't like the idea of doing long contracts with these. I'm I'm perfectly fine with a one-year one. And then maybe we could look at, you said the the, you've you've sent out the bill already for this year.
Yep, people have already paid.
Maybe that's something we can look at if we're adding features that it seems like that's what people want. I mean, and, you know, are there features you guys want that you don't have avail, that aren't available to you? Is there an example of something you would you would like to see? Pardon me?
So I did meet with a Realtor prior to bringing this to you guys the first time. And these were the ones that they highly recommended out of all of them.
You guys want the sales search one? Okay, and you're willing to pay an additional cost for that? But but you personally would, but because it's not, it's not fair to have the county shoulder an additional cost for something that the Realtors are gonna use.
But then, it's not fair for her to only do what she'd do.
Sure, sure.
So we got that accomplished. We know what those two would do.
But we're still making money.
I think I think I have to again stress, Dan, we're talking eighteen thousand in subscriptions paying for a fifteen thousand dollar piece of software. And we're gonna get two new features, one of which is gonna be free to everyone.
That that's assuming the numbers stay the same.
But that, if with a three-year fixed, then the numbers stay the same for three years?
No, the subscriber numbers.
Okay, if you increase the subscribers, if you increase the price of a product, most likely you're going to lose subscribers.
Guys, we're talking about peanuts.
So that's kind of how things work.
I'm totally fine with doing it for a year.
We're talking about peanuts, this this goal with what makes our customers most satisfied.
But are 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 our customers locking us in to three years? Are they gonna lock in? If we're locked in for three years, are they gonna lock in for three years? Or are they gonna come up with a new program two years from now and say, ah, I'm sorry, county, we're not gonna pay you anymore?
Well, I understand. Well, I understand that, John, that's business, that's the way it goes. I think it probably happens that way in trucking business.
I understand that, so that's why I'm saying let's do one year at a time.
I, I'd move approval of the Beacon enhancements and do a one-year contract.
Okay, so so with that-
Just, just a minute, do I have a second?
Second.
I'm sorry.
Have a motion and a second, now discussion, go ahead.
So the, with the enhancements, that price has increased, like I discussed about last time I was here, to fifteen thousand five ninety-two would be the price increase if you were to get those enhancements for twenty-twenty-four, which is more than what the three-year fix term is.
By four hundred dollars.
And then there, then you're adding to potential to the increases through the years.
I move to amend the motion to, to a three-year term contract for the money savings and the stability that it presents.
I have a motion to amend the motion, I have a second. Motion and a second, further discussion.
Well, then I'll move to amend that to, to a one-year. I can't, I can't, I can't understand seeing-
It's enough.
We'll vote on the amendment, but I-
We'll vote on the amended, uh, motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'll oppose.
Aye. Aye. Name?
Five-two, three, three-two, motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners, have a good night.
Thank you.
We have to still vote on the motion that's on hand now, that was the amendment.
That was the amendment.
Yeah.
Now we have to vote on the motion, yes, okay. All those in favor of the mo-
Can we get, can we get further discussion? One, one of the reasons, I guess-
Was there for sure what the first motion was? To go one year? Okay.
At fifteen-five-
Fifteen thousand. You know, we're actually dealing with the same company right now being locked into a contract with the geospatial ones that are trying to charge us, you know, what is it, eight thousand dollars or eighty-five hundred dollars? I just don't think it's a good idea to be locked in. Yeah, we might save a few dollars, but
Okay, I, I understand.
If you look at the eighty-five hundred, we may get stuck with, we're losing money.
I understand your concern, appreciate that.
That's my, that's my opinion.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the original motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, the same?
No.
What did, does she know what she's voting on?
We, yeah, we better, she better clarify.
Sadly, I do know what I'm voting on.
The, the motion, original motion as amended is three years with the enhancements.
And that's what I thought we voted on already.
We, we voted on the amending there.
Amending that motion. Now we went back to, to the original motion to approve it.
Which was one year.
Which is, which is now amended to three years.
Wanda, do you want a one-year commitment or a three-year commitment?
Well-
Because that's going to change the vote.
Unfortunately, I think Commissioner Heine has something to say about how they ridiculously increased the cost of, 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 sorry, I'm extremely fatigued. The cost of the equipment, the, the IT stuff that I'm not that great at. I don't ever like to spend money, as you folks are aware. But I do think that locking it in for the three years is probably the best idea.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
With amended, so it's three years with the enhancements.
Yep.
Correct.
Okay, so, once again, let's just reaffirm our, those in favor of all that, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Name?
Name?
Five to two.
Three, three to two.
Three to two, I mean.
Five to two.
Yeah, I know that. Now we got to think about the, whether it's two-thirds or-
No, not, not for this one.
Not for this?
A little majority.
Okay, let's move on. Wage discussion, ambulance.
The only question that I have for Eric before he starts is whether the proposed increase and this step, the, these folks will get, will put him over budget.
No, it will not.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Eric Van Duzen, Yankton County EMS. We were tabled, and unfortunately, when you table somebody, you get to see them more often. And knowing Wanda's already sick of seeing me, just kidding, Wanda. We, we hope you get to feeling better soon. It was tabled for a good reason.
Then she must be done with it.
No, 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 no.
We hope you get to feeling better soon, but it was tabled for a good reason. And the information that came out from the AP Triton, they really didn't have a lot of information to give back to us. They did request some further information after our meeting that had nothing to do with wage studies at all. It was geolocations of where we were picking patients up and some other stuff is, I'm like, okay. So it really didn't come anything out of it. So I wanted to follow up with my initial request of a dollar fifty an hour pay increase for my frontline folks. Again, this does not affect me as a department head in any way, shape, or form. And yes, it does come underneath our budget for both twenty-twenty-three and twenty-twenty-four. And that's even with us bringing on Maria from the WIC office stepping in to help with billing. Even with all of those factors, looking at our budget for twenty-twenty-four, we're still under budget.
And for the record, what is, what is the pay for, you're, you're trying to focus it on EMTs and paramedics, correct? What does an EMT starting out make right now? And what does a paramedic start out making right now?
So our full-time EMTs are making about seventeen. They start at seventeen oh two, and our part-time EMTs are fifteen sixty-two. And our paramedics are right at about twenty dollars an hour.
And you're looking at a dollar increase for those or across the board for everybody in the ambulance, or what are you looking at?
A buck fifty across the board for those folks that are doing frontline calls. So first, first-out crews.
EMT, paramedic, and driver?
Yep, EMT and paramedics. And the way we calculated the cost for first-out truck or calls that they're going on, it's going to roughly, at worst-case scenario, is about forty-three thousand dollars.
And you-
I'd move to approve the wage increase for them.
We're, we're not ready yet.
And the reason you're asking is you've had pretty high turnover rate on some of those positions, from what I understand. Is that correct, historically, over the last, you know, and you're having difficulty filling some of those positions as well?
Recruitment and retention has been an issue, and we're hoping to be more of one of those agencies in the state that people are looking to come to. And we're going to have to honestly, we're evaluating on how we do job training. You know, I have other department heads here, Michael's here earlier. EMS, you, you don't get to just come in and have on-the-job training. We have always required you have to have that EMT. Well, that EMT certification comes with a hundred-and-eighty-hour course. And it roughly run, it's been historically running in a tri-state, tri-state area, eleven-hundred to fifteen-hundred bucks. Well, people don't want to pay that to go get an EMT that they can volunteer for all the time. We do have an EMT course starting in January, we're hoping gain some, some traction with that. We're partnering with Vermillion on that. But we need, we need to start thinking outside the box of how to do some on-the-job training the way other agencies have.
Are you looking at this pay increase to start January first?
I was actually hoping to do it for the month of December.
Well, would that create a problem? Because it'd be a pay increase, and then once they get another pay increase starting in the next year, how would that work, Patty?
Because you guys have already proved for the budget-wise to put in there, we have to make a motion at the end of the year meeting to, for a raise. But that would just be put in for his next year, when you guys make a motion to approve wages.
If, if we increased it at a dollar, dollar fifty an hour, he wants it effective now, would that create problems doing it now versus doing January first?
I don't, I don't believe so, because they'll just, they'll just, when they go into the individuals' record, they'll just increase that by a dollar fifty.
Okay, December, and then will they be, isn't there another crease, increase that takes effect?
They will, that will be just added on to the-
So it would be, it would be more than that, then? With the increase?
Just like what they're making now more than, yep.
The only thing that's changing is we're adding a buck fifty to the base salary, so.
Yeah.
That's all, it's, it's not complicated.
Nope.
And we, but we still have another increase that would happen in January.
Yes.
But then, but you're, if you're increasing it now, you're still increasing it.
Yeah, yeah.
And it'll just go on, yeah.
You have two increases, right, now and January, right?
No, because it, it'll be put in what they were going to get for next year.
Okay, okay.
The dollar fifty. That's all that's added. Well, because we have a, I think it was scheduled now. That's with the new, I think originally we put four-point-four percent interest increase on the wage scale. And, and for the dollar fi, for the hourly ones, that dollar fifty will just be added.
So it'll be a dollar fifty plus the four-point-four percent. Yeah, okay.
And I, either way, we're still going to be able to make it under budget with all of that.
And you're going to still be well under what the state average is, I think.
My guess is yes, yeah.
I'd entertain, if there's no further discussion, I'd entertain a motion.
I'd make the same motion to approve the dollar fifty wage increase for the ambulance service.
Second.
Have a motion by Wanda, second by John, discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Have a good Christmas.
You as well, thank you.
Some Platts, Gary.
Read fast.
Yeah, we have a few tonight, six of them, so I will, I'll read fast. Platt of Lot A of Lot One, and Lot B of Lot One, Metz Peterson addition in the north half of the northeast quarter of Section fifteen, Township ninety-three North, Range fifty-six West of the Fifth Principal Maritie in Yankton County, South Dakota.
Approve the pre, move to approve the Peterson flat.
Second.
I have only one, I only have one question on this.
Okay, we'll come to it. Motion by Wanda, second by John, discussion.
All right, so just a really quick question is like, this is the lot that is going to have a new shouse on it, right?
Yes.
Yeah, and so there's no conflicts on setbacks or anything around it?
No.
All right.
Any other discussion? Entertain a motion?
No, you have a motion. Aye.
Second.
Aye, you got, and then votes.
Oh, yeah, okay, John. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed, the same? Motion Gary's.
Next up, we have the Dumont Platt, preliminary Platt.
Move approval.
A motion by Dan. Have a second?
Second.
Second by Wanda, further discussion?
Just one note, there, there is a con, a condition, condition on that, I believe.
Correct, on the final plat, it's showing that, that there's a fence line in question. But if they, once that's solved legally, then they'll both have to replat one way or the other.
It's your recommendation to prove as it is?
Yes.
Then I'm, I'm fine with it. Rob, you don't see any issue with that? Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, the same, motion carries.
Next up is Stoddenmeyer Platt.
We have two Dumont Platts?
Do you have to-
Yes. Yeah, I thought he did both, I thought he did both.
Move approval of the second, second Platt, Dumont Platt?
Second.
Don't you have to do the Dumont holding second plat?
That's what we're doing.
That's what we went back to, Wanda.
Okay, I didn't get that.
Motion by Dan.
Second.
Second by Ryan. Discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, the same, motion carries. Now it's Stoddenmeyer.
Now it's Stoddenmeyer Platt.
I move we approve this Stoddenmeyer Platt.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Dan, second by John. Discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same, motion carries.
Next one's the Adam Franks addition.
Adam Fring addition Platt.
Move approval.
Dan?
Second.
Yep.
Motion, motion by Dan, second by Wanda. Discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, the same. Next one's the Sphere Platt.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by John, second by Dan, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, the same, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is to appoint a wind energy ordinance task force. And Gary, you've, you've-
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion or move that we postpone that until January's first meeting in January, because I don't believe that was advertised in the paper. Like we had-
It doesn't have to be, but-
I understand, but I thought we said last, that last meeting that we said to-
I think at the meeting we said that.
Yeah, we had volunteers that had already started, but, yeah, you didn't give me approval to, to advertise at the last meeting, so. But we have, now we have seven people there. Mike Healy actually called Friday, too, and said he was interested, but it's up to you how you want to do it.
I, I agree with John, we'll probably end up with the same people. We got great people now, but at least it's, you know, a transparent process where if somebody wants to get involved, they can announce it, we probably won't get anybody else, and then choose it the first meeting in January and then get going. I, I can't imagine a lot of work will get done between now and then.
Okay, I, I, I agree.
I, I'd move that we allow Gary to advertise for citizen, you know, Yankton County citizens to be on a wind energy task force.
I'll get that out tomorrow.
John, did you make a motion first?
Uh, to, to postpone or table this, postpone till January's meeting to appoint the wind energy.
Okay.
So we have to vote on that.
Okay, so we have one matter, one motion.
Well, how about, how about you, your motion, and then you add authorize him to advertise?
And, and add, and authorize Gary to advertise.
Are you okay with that, Ryan?
Yeah.
That sound like, okay. And then, did you second, did you second?
I'll second that, yeah.
Okay, okay.
So for the two Fridays, we'll try and do that.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Good.
So it'll be on the, I think it's January second?
We would need to vote on that.
Yeah.
Sorry.
We do need?
Yeah, we do need to vote.
I have a motion by Dan.
No, John.
John, second by Dan.
Ryan.
Ryan.
At first was Dan.
We cha, we changed, sorry. Long meeting.
All in favor, say aye.
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 All right, we'll take care of it, thanks.
December fifth, twenty twenty-three minutes. Anybody have any corrections? Or I'd entertain a motion to approve.
Bless you. I move-
I'd move to approve the December five, twenty twenty-three minute.
Wanda approves, motion to approve, Ryan second. Discussion, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, the same, motion carries, next claims.
The only questions I had about claims were page eighteen, insurance for the nurse's office, that, that office isn't going to exist. I, I assume after December thirty-first, so I imagine that bill is, is that bill for January or next year? Or what is that bill for, page eighteen?
Who's it made up to?
Uh, county nurse.
Northern insurance.
Under county.
Uh, it'd be for MTRC Smith Insurance.
Is that Workman's?
Yeah, it's Workman's.
I would-
It's Workman's comp.
Okay, so what, I don't know what that-
Would that be for next year's work comp, or is that for previous?
It's for this year.
Okay.
Twenty twenty-three.
That would, that'd be my question. And then the other question I had on page twenty-six, I don't feel that we should- I don't feel that we should, uh, pay that, uh, eight thousand five hundred and thirty-two dollars this time, I think we should do some more negotiating with them, um, before we pay that bill.
Or for the geospatial?
Yeah, so I, I'd, I guess I'd approve the claims with the exception of the geospatial, eight thousand five hundred and thirty-two dollars.
Do you have a suggestion on a strategy on that?
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to negotiate with them some more.
Let's see if we can get it.
I'll get a second.
John seconds. Okay, discussion. Ryan?
Um, so you're gonna, you're gonna negotiate, or is that, would that be Gary to negotiate?
Gary, how do you want to do it, do you want to call out for the geospatial, or John, did you want to be involved in that? I just, I, I think it's unfortunate we're getting stuck with that pretty hefty bill.
I can certainly, we decided this last time.
Well, no, I think, I, I don't, I think that's something that we need to just see if they'll work with us on that, since we're not going to use that.
I was wondering if you could go back and change things.
That, that is for something else.
One, one second, Wanda, I hear what you're saying.
Okay.
Gary, did you hear what Wanda said? We passed this thing, uh?
Oh, that was, that was for peak and not geospatial.
She, she's, I think, thinking about some different.
No, at, at the December five meeting. I don't think we can go backwards now when we're trying to approve or disapprove the, um, December five, twenty twenty-three minutes and move, and that would have been including the claims, I believe.
Come, come up, come up.
Is this the one, uh, that, uh?
Come up, let's, let's get it straightened out here.
So, no, so, so.
So, last meeting, the last meeting, the motion was to, was to approve a, try to approve a monthly option. This is a renewal for a full year.
Oh, okay.
Um, from the email that we have received, that there is no monthly option.
Right.
And so what Dan is moving is that we don't pay the year now, and instead, Gary, to try to negotiate a monthly option.
Correct.
I get it.
And so, yeah, so the, the, the yearly bill hasn't been paid to date yet, so.
And this is the renewal for next year of geo permits.
Yes. I'll call them tomorrow.
So, okay.
All right, thank you.
So is that, so you have a, that's the motion in the second, right?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so, are we, we have to vote on the claims?
Discussion, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Opposed? No, all, I've never seen.
I voted aye.
Didn't hear? Okay, it's getting late. Uh, Auditor Treasurer, uh, report.
Move to approve the Auditor Treasurer report.
Wanda?
Second.
John seconds, discussion, all in favor say aye.
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 Pose the same, motion carries, Pool Cash report.
Oh, that's the same one.
Four eight.
Same one, four H M O U with S D S U.
I think we have a choice.
Yeah, and my answer is the same too, and if, if it's something, oh, sorry.
Move approval. Second.
John, uh, moves approval, uh, Dan seconds, discussion, all in favor say aye.
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 Pose the same, motion carries, public comment. Gary, is there anything up there on the board? Any, anybody in the, uh, audience would like to, uh, have public comment? Commissioner, hearing none, the public comment is closed, Commissioner updates. Ryan, let's start with you this time.
I, I don't have an update this week, uh, it was a very busy two weeks, so I don't have much to update.
John?
I, uh, did discuss, uh, some rental agreements, or, uh, visited with the state, uh, health, uh, committee about renting the basement space from the vacancy of the, the Wick and the Community Health Services, um, and they're going to get back to me, um, he could not get a direct answer from the state in this short of amount of time, so. But I did offer them rental space for what, the same as space that they have, at fifteen hundred dollars per month, and, uh, he was going to go to them and decide, and if they decide not to, they will be moving out, and I haven't given them an actual timeframe to move out, but I did tell them we would not kick them out in the street.
Good, thank you. Dan?
Lot going on right now at the state legislature, uh, alcohol excise tax, there's a bunch of different bills, ones to give fifty percent to the counties, going from twenty-five to fifty, there's another proposal out there to actually take our twenty-five percent away and go to, uh, to help with, uh, indigenous defense, which would actually have a lot of counties losing money, so we hope that doesn't happen. Uh, several VSO bills, the, um, emergent draft, uh, two thirty-nine, the one that dealt with state, uh, taking over emergency management, as far as I know, that one's dead, uh, the TIF administrative fee, that one is not moving forward. Uh, property tax administrative fee is moving forward, uh, centralized property tax, uh, resolution program still moving forward, uh, cybersecurity grants of one point seven million still moving forward, and just, uh, uh, John and I are going to be reaching out to our state representatives to, uh, bring some of these forward, and we encourage you guys to do that as well.
Again, Dan, say the la- your last sentence.
Oh, we, we're going to be reaching out to our state reps, uh, and talking about some of these county proposals that are going to help the counties out, I'm sorry, go ahead.
And, and according to with the, the TIF program, um, there was an article in the paper that, uh, the new paradigm technologies building is going to be up and functioning in twenty-five, and that is a TIF, and the, the rifles that they're going to manufacture are starting at seven thousand dollars, is what the paper said.
John, they're actually going to be up and running in, uh, this upcoming spring.
Would, would you come up to the microphone, please?
Since I interviewed him and did this story on that, this, um, it's, they're going to be up and running, uh, late spring or early summer of twenty-four, not twenty-five.
Okay, okay.
Okay, and yeah, the products they're selling are, um, starting at seven thousand dollars, doesn't really affect the county much, but the city gets sales tax from each one of those.
That's the point that I'm going to make, is, is the city is going to get two and a half percent sales tax on that seven thousand dollars, and the county is going to get absolutely zero, and we have to, we have to administrate the payment on that facility.
State will get four point two percent.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, at twenty years from now, two decades from now, we might get something out of it.
So that's why, that's why I encourage people to contact your legislatures and push that, that, uh, bill through that is, is, is in front of them, that, uh, the county gets at least an administrative fee for handling the TIF.
Good point, uh, last thing I wanted to bring up, uh, lots and lots of talk about pipelines, and, uh, even some talk about some bills to take it out of the county's hands. I know we might differ about projects, but I think we all believe local control is important, um, for citizen input and our input, we might disagree, but at least we're able to talk about it, it's better than it being approved in peer without any of our input, so that's something important that's going to be coming up. That's all I have.
Be ready to go into executive session then, do I have a motion to, uh?
I move to go into executive session for poor relief and, uh, personnel issues.
Second.
Motion by Wanda. Second by Dan, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose the same, motion carries, we are in executive session.
Hey, we need some good, do you need some good publicity on, on?
Really good, really balanced out.
He sounded a little way to figure out if anything's needed, right?
I, I, you know, exactly, I thought, anything under fifty kilo. Really, it should just be like, just like a regular building. Yeah. Exactly, it's like, you don't want to look regulated, anything, so.
Just, just.
Yeah, exactly, yeah. Yeah, well, now it's on to the wind one. Yeah? I want, I wanted to make sure that that survey gets all the points in there, so it is very important. is very important.